Good morning, everyone. Time now is 9:01. I will call the Lake County Planning Commission hearing dated for October 24th, 2024 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which is the nation we serve, and to the great achievements of our own.
Thank you. Danae, may I get verification of legal notice?
Yes, Madam Chair, all items have been verified.
Okay, moving right along for approval of the consent agenda dated October 10th, 2024. Any discussion before we move to approve those? No?
I move to approve the minutes from October 10th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
All in favor, or motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will open public input. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any concerns that or items that are not listed on the agenda today. Any hands in our Zoom room? Okay, no hands in the Zoom room. We will go ahead and close public input, and we will take up our first timed item Time now is 9:05. We will begin with our first timed item. This is a public hearing for consideration of a proposed general plan conformity, GPC 22-11, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 22-28, for the Wolf Creek Bridge replacement project. Applicant: Lake County Public Works Department. Location: Quad Benmore Canyon, TN 14 North, RO 7 West, Section 11, Universal Transverse Mercator Zone 10. And then there's the coordinates, but I'm not going to read those. Good morning, Laura, how are you?
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner.
Let's, uh...
My name is Laura Hall.
Mic. Let's just get you, we can move it closer to you and make sure it's on. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
That's great.
Yes, thanks. Good morning. My name's Laura Hall, and I'm Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. This morning, we're going to be reviewing GPC 2211, IS 2228, which is located in the unincorporated community of Spring Valley. And the agenda will include a project, or permit request, project description, site description, project analysis, cumulative impacts, and recommendations. This is a vicinity map, and it shows the project site with the red star there. And this is page L1 of the site plan. It shows the overall view of the project. And this is the area of potential effects map, and it shows the construction staging sites and temporary easements in the yellow, and the water crossing in the yellow, right below the one easement site by the creek, or the bridge. Before the project can be approved, Government Code Title VII, Division 1, Chapter 3, Article 7, Section 65402 requires that the county determine if a proposed action is consistent with the general plan before it can be taken. And the project description, it should be noted that if removal of mature oaks cannot be avoided, that mitigation measures by L1 would require that a mitigation agreement be developed between the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for replacement of oaks at a ratio of no less than three to one. And it also should be noted here that due to the close proximity of a residence to the, where the construction will be occurring, that mitigation measures, noise 1 and through noise 6, have been incorporated into the project. The first four mitigations would require limiting construction operation hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, muffling devices on the equipment, utilizing construction methods or equipment with the lowest level of noise and ground vibration, and turning off idling The project analysis includes, included determining whether the proposed project was in compliance with the following regulations. The replacement bridge would be wider to comply with the current American Association of State Highway and Transportation Official standards for local rural roads, including nine feet travel lanes and two feet shoulders, plus crash-tested vehicle barriers. A five-foot walkway will also be proposed on the north side of the replacement structure to accommodate schoolchildren assessing a nearby bus stop. And construction of the bridge would comply with CAL FIRE's SRA 4 Fire Safety Regulation Standards for Roads effective 11 of 2020. During construction activities, emergency responders would be able to use an existing well-established low-water crossing which is directly adjacent to the existing bridge and appears to be regularly used route for vehicle traffic. A water quality technical memorandum was completed by Caltrans on June 24th, 2016. Recommendations for protection of both groundwater and surface water will be implemented as mitigation measure WQ 1 through WQ 9. All required local, state, and federal regulations for water quality would be implemented for this project. The project would comply with the following Lake County ordinances specifically by, it would require any permanent right-of-ways requiring the taking of land. Construction would be temporary, and mitigate, mitigation has been incorporated into the project for the sensitive animal and plant habitats. Therefore, the project complies with Article 14. The bridge replacement would result in reducing hazards and damage resulting from floodwaters in compliance with Article 36. Following completion of the bridge replacement, all areas would be cleared of construction materials and equipment, and erosion control would be implemented with native seeds and mulch applied to the ground. There would be no expansion of the bridge into the repairing corridor, therefore, the project complies with Article 37. Since there's no proposed development of single-family homes, Article 10 really does, is an applicable in this case. The project would comply with all conformance standards of Article 41. The initial study found that the project could cause significant impacts on the following environmental areas: air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation, tribal-cultural resources. However, the mitigation measures applied, mitigation measures applied impacts are reduced to less than significant. Staff received, staff, let me see, staff includes the following comments received from the agencies, and tribal comments, AB 52 was sent out on July 8, 2022, and again on July 27, 2023, and no responses were received from the affiliated tribe, and there were no public comments. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions: adopt mitigated negative declaration, IS 2228. Uh-oh. Can you put that down?
Just go back one slide, did we find? There you go.
I'll just start over here. Adopt mitigated negative declaration, IS 2228, for GPC 2211 based on the findings in the staff report, and approve general plan conformity, GPC 2211 based on the findings in the staff report. And that is the end of the presentation, and the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions for staff or for the applicant before we open up public comment?
Just one clarification. The staff report refers to the construction potentially beginning in the spring of 2019. So I think there was just a correction that needs to be made there.
Yeah, that was based on the original project description, and the project's been in the works for a while now.
Do they have a tentative start date at this time? An updated one?
Yes.
You're welcome to approach the mic, please.
April 15th of next year would be the anticipated start.
Okay, you can go ahead and state your first and last name, and then you can repeat what you just said into the mic, please.
Yes, my name is David Bingham. I'm an Assistant Engineer with the Engineering and Inspection Division. We plan to construct the bridge next year, starting as soon as we're able to, April 15th. However, there are still a number of things that we need to get finalized for the project, so unfortunately, it may end up going into 2026, but we're going to do our best to get it built next year.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments or questions for staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I had a question. So regarding TCR, so there were no tribes that were interested in having any comments for the project, but there are a couple of, there's TCR 1 through TCR 3 regarding tribal-cultural monitors. Would that, if they don't respond, does anybody have to take, does someone still have to do the monitoring?
Yeah, those are...
Into the mic. Sorry, you have to just speak into the mic so that everybody else can hear out there.
Those are standard mitigation measures that are added, and yes, they would have to comply with all the mitigation measures.
Okay. And if there's no affiliated tribe, how does the applicant plan to get the cultural sensitivity training? Is that just on their end, and they have to take care of that?
Yeah. This project also includes NEPA. It's a NEPA SEQA, so on the NEPA side, I think they would have something in place for tribal training.
We're happy to help them find the appropriate tribes as well. There's a process to it. Additionally, we do not have standard mitigations. However, you will see those mitigations listed frequently because with our rich tribal and cultural resources, they are frequently appropriate, but we do assign or add mitigations only as appropriate per project.
Okay. Thank you, Director Turner. I will go ahead and open up public comment for this agenda item. Anybody wishing to speak is welcome to approach the podium. If you are in the Zoom room, please raise your hand, and we will unmute you. No one approaching the podium and chambers, and there's no hands raised in the Zoom room. I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Prepare to make a motion?
Okay.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration, IS 22-28, for the Wolf Creek Bridge replacement project, bridge number 14C-0049, applied for by the Lake County Department of Public Works located in, located in unincorporated Spring Valley in Lake County, Quad Benmore Canyon, T14N, RO 7W, Section 11, UTM Zone 10, along county rights of way and temporary easements on adjacent properties to the north, based on the findings listed in the staff report and dated October 24th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the general plan conformity, GPC 22-11, for the Wolf Creek Bridge replacement project, applied for by the Lake County Department of Public Works located in unincorporated Spring Valley in Lake County, Quad Benmore Canyon, T14N, RO 7W, Section 11, UTM Zone 10, along county rights of way and temporary easements on adjacent properties to the north, is in conformity with the Lake County general plan based on the findings listed in the staff report dated October 24th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission's recommendation, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted, submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the Commission's final determination. Our next item, our next timed item for 9:20, is a public hearing for consideration of a proposed final subdivision map, SD 24-06, for finalizing Village 2, Phase 1 of the commercial development application, or excuse me, applicant Valley Oaks LLC and consultant Rick Tooker, location 18761 Hartman Road and 18196 and 18426 South State Highway 29, Middletown, lots 24, 36, and 51, APNs 014-260-2436 and 51.
Good morning.
Good morning, Director Turner.
I'm Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. The project planner, Max Stockton, is attending a Subdivision Map Act training along with a number of our planning staff today, so I told him I'd cover this one for him. Valley Oaks is a name that I know we are all very familiar with. It's been with us as an exciting mixed-use project in the Middletown area since 2006. You've seen it most recently, well, in the last few years, the Board of Supervisors in 2018 did approve a tentative map that included this, this project that you have before you today. Our processes in Lake County are such that when you, the applicant or the developer gets an approved tentative map, it includes a number of conditions to work on, and so they have been working assiduously to satisfy those conditions. After they get to that point where the county surveyor is comfortable that the conditions have been satisfied, then they apply at the Community Development Department for a final map, which is what they did this past summer. So we do have in the packet the, the agency response from the surveyor's office that the conditions have been certified. All that is before you today is to recognize or to, to acknowledge that the project is similar to what was approved as a tentative map, as well as certify that the conditions have been satisfied, and send it on to the Board of Supervisors for final approval. There is a, the reason why it's before you today is because there's a line on the cover sheet of the subdivision map that has a signatory spot for the Chair of the Planning Commission, which is that certification that you'll take action on in a moment. The representatives for the project are here as well. Should you actually have any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Director Turner. Would the applicant or anybody else like to speak on behalf of the development? We always like to hear from, from you, you know, keep us in the loop.
Sure, I'll be very fast. Thank you, Chair, Planning Commissioners, staff. Rick Tooker, I am a landes planner for the applicant Napa Valley Partners, and I'm here with Fletcher, who you all know as well. Just really quickly, terrific staff report, I think for context, just to add, you'll recall from seeing me and us for a while here, that the key issue here is with the lot on which the grocery outlet is located, is what ultimately is, is the action to final map with the board and with your recommendation. The capital that's used to leverage that property is then rolled into the next phases, so that's why we've kind of been going through this process. I started it in November of 2021, but there is process, and we get it. There's, there are conditions that we need to meet. There's, you know, post-COVID environments and staffing and craziness that's been occurring for, for some time. So I appreciate to Mariaa and to Nicole their patience with me, and we appreciate your review of it, and if you have questions, we're here for you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the applicant before I open it up for public comment?
No.
All right. Thank you. That being said, I will go ahead and open public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item is welcome to approach the podium. If you are in the Zoom room, please raise your hand, and we will unmute you. Okay. No one approaching the podium and chambers, and I don't see any hands raised in the Zoom room. We will officially close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or action. And I will say, it's nice to see that we had this previously. There was a couple of things that had to be changed and revisited, so to get this back in front of us in such a short timeframe is, is good to see.
No, no questions, just a comment, and I'm prepared to offer a motion.
Okay, Commissioner has?
I'm just glad we're at this point. It's, it's a process, and I think of it that way, as ongoing, and I'm glad we're at this point in the process.
As well. Thank you.
And I move that the County of Lake Planning Commission find that the final map, SD 24-06, for the Valley Oaks subdivision substantially conforms to the approved tentative map and conditions imposed thereon, and authorize the chairman to, the chairwoman to so-certify on said map and transmit the final map to the county surveyor for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination. Thank you so much. Our next timed item is for 9:35. We have a little bit of time between, so please bear with us, and we will take our timed item at 9:35. I'm showing about a nine-minute difference right now. All right, welcome back. It is 9:35. We will bring up our next timed item. It's a public hearing for consideration of major use permit, UP 23-05, and mitigated negative declaration, IS 23-10, for construction of an ag forest wood processing bio, bioenergy facility with supporting infrastructure. Applicant: Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, location 755 East Highway, or excuse me, East State Highway 20, Upper Lake, APNs, or APN 004-010-04. We will get our PowerPoint project set up, and I do believe, Laura, you're presenting. One moment.
I think that's all we can. It's not the same as on the, in your...
Okay, you are correct. Looks like I have the wrong parcel number on my agenda. Let me just clarify. Just to be clear, Laura, is that the correct parcel number, or is the one ending in zero, the 10, 010-04?
It's the 1, 01004.
Okay. So then, is that parcel number that you have on there incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Okay. Let it be known, and for the record, the parcel number, the correct parcel number in reference is APN 004-010-04. Thank you for the clarification, for noticing that. Okay. Laura, the floor is yours.
I think Mariaa's going to open it up.
Okay. And let's just bring the mic closer to you, if that's a little bit easier.
There we go.
Just a certain clarification. Throughout the staff report, a Donahoo facility was mentioned at 8605 Bottle Rock Road. That information was taken from the project description, but had since changed. So just for clarification before Laura gets started with the presentation, wood chips at 8605 Bottle Rock Road are there as a result of a PG&E fire recovery project. There is, that is no longer a wood processing facility, so there are chips that will come from there to, that could supply this project, but it is not an ongoing facility. So it would not continue to provide chips after these chips are gone. The property owner is trying to give them away to anybody who will take them. And additionally, on page five in your staff report, where it's listed that Donahoo Facility is a main customer, that is not accurate either, according to the property owner. So, but those are the only items that have, are indicative of an outdated project description.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Good morning again, Commissioners. My name's Laura Hall, Senior Planner with CDD Department, and this is a major use permit, UP 2301, IS 2310, for Ag Forest Wood Processing Bioenergy Project in Upper Lake. The agenda includes a project, or permit request, project description, site description, project analysis, cumulative impacts, and recommendations. And here, the project site is shown in blue, but I would like to call out in the staff report, there is a map, the vicinity map in the staff report shows the wrong parcel number, but this is the correct parcel number. The site is located on the eastern edge of Upper Lake, approximately 550 feet before the Running Creek Casino. And this is an aerial project, or site map that shows the boundary of the five-acre parcel site, which is approximately 1,000 feet from Highway 20. And the map's kind, it's, it's sideways, but the project site is down toward the bottom of the map, south end. And the red arrow here shows approximately the location of where the biomass facility would be located. And as shown on the fourth bullet point on the slide, with exception of the foundation for the large water tank, after the lease has ended, all infrastructure will be removed, and the site will be restored to its natural state. Also important to note is, due to clearing forest projects and reducing greenhouse gases, this project helps to implement the following state plans: the California's Wildfire and Forest Resilient Action Plan of January 2021, and California's 2022 Scoping Plan for Achieving Carbon Neutrality. This slide shows the syn gas process steps, which includes, first, the wood biomass is dropped into an airlock chamber through a solid, through a solid slide gate. In the bottom of the chamber, it is also, there's also a slide gate that is open once the first chamber is full. Wood is, wood then enters electronically heated and sealed in insulated chamber that is thermally heated with no air to release the gas embedded in the biomass. Syn gas is then filtered and cooled to make it ready for use in the power generation, and the biochar is then sent to a holding container.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
If we could go back to that slide?
Yep.
That's, that's just a...
Oops.
It's like a stock photo, that's from a different...
Yes, that is an example... Yes, that is an example of the operation.
I'm just curious, this shows an open, you can see the sky there, and so the actual, what's that that keeps popping up?
Yeah, this is actually from the Walnut Grove County.
No, I understand that, but that's not what the non-permanent facility would look like.
It would be totally covered.
Right. And the size of those various pieces of equipment, does that conform to the size of the equipment that would be here in Lake County, or is that a different scale as well?
That would be a question for the applicant. I'm not sure on that.
Okay.
You can, we'll give you an opportunity after the presentation to clarify.
Oops. And this is the project description. It should be noted that the project site has been designated as prime farmland and is under a Williamson Act contract. As a result pursuant to sequel guidelines, a land evaluation and site assessment was completed for the project and concluded no significant effects would occur. The project analysis included determining whether the proposed project was in compliance with the following regulations. The project would result in hiring three to four local employees, so it would comply with economic viability of Upper Lake. The proposed project would result in reducing forest fuels throughout Lake County and therefore would reduce wildfires, so complies with this. The project would comply with the following Lake County zoning ordinance specifically by producing bioenergy, which complies with Article 4 under Article 27. The biomass facility would be set back 1,000 feet from State Highway 20 in compliance with Article 34. The project would comply with Article 37 with mitigation measure GO1. And finally, the proposed project is in allowed use under the base zoning district, so it also complies with Article 36. The initial study found that the project could cause potentially significant impacts on the following environmental areas: aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, public services, transportation, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. However, with the mitigation measures applied, impacts were reduced to less than significant. The following comments were received, and consultation occurred with tribes and concluded on the same day of June 11, 2024. The following comments, public comments included air and water concerns, included air and water quality, noise, smell, truck traffic and safety, trash, drainage, wildlife watershed, and species flood, nightlife, current condition, the current condition of the parcel, leasing of the parcel, reduction of property values, and location to schools. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions: adopt mitigated negative declaration IS 2310 for major use permit UP 2305 based on the findings in the staff report, and approve major use permit UP 2305 based on the findings in the staff report. And that is the end of the presentation, and the applicant is here to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, staff. Will the applicant please approach the podium? And if you could give any clarification to Commissioner Hess's questions in regards to the size of the mechanical machinery we were looking at versus what might be used at this proposed site? And Commissioner Hess, did you have any other concerns? I apologize. You just wanted to kind of reference...
No, let's start there. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Commissioners, good morning. My name is Tom Jordan. I am the staff to the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. I'd like to hand out some papers so I can address Commissioner's concern. There's a copy for, there's actually more copies than you need. I think there's one for Miria, too. You're going to need one more.
Yes.
Just a moment. Sure. Is this the green sheet that we already received? Okay. And just bear with us as we are just receiving this, is my understanding? Yeah, the public is concerned about not having a copy of this. We can definitely supply some copies.
One for Miria?
Yes, sir.
Did you give it to her?
No.
Ruby, would you mind going over to the admin office and asking them to make a few copies using budget code 2702? Thanks.
So if we could probably start with your question, if we could put that slide back on the screen.
Mr. Jordan, if this, if your response specifically refers to this document...
Page three of that document.
Then I think we should wait until copies have been made for the public as well.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Thank you for being so patient, everyone. And now that you have what we were given in front of you, we will allow Mr. Jordan to continue. I believe you were referencing to the page three of the packet that you gave us?
Chairman, correct. That is what I'm referring to. So if we could go back to that slide, if that is possible. If not, it's in the staff report summary report on page, page six. We can look at it that way as well.
Staff, if we can bring up the PowerPoint?
Scott photo.
Yeah, the photo of the machinery, and then share the screen just so we could have that as reference as well. And then you can just click through until we get to the photo. Right there. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you for bringing that back up. So this site is actually our field testing site and represents the type of equipment, most of the equipment that we would be using at the wood processing campus. The Artist Gasifier is about eight feet high in height, and it's about 12 feet long in length. So from a perspective, it is not a huge industrial site or a huge industrial equipment. That is the equipment we would be using at the Upper Lake. We may have two of those because of the bit of a change. The Biopass feeder bin is, you can see comparable in size to the Artist Gasifier. It's a little larger. It is sitting on a podium-type arrangement because the wood chip is dropped from the bottom fed to the end. You can't see it, but there is the input gasifier, there is a hydraulic or a vacuum pump that brings the chip up to the top, and it's dropped into the Artist Gasifier at a regulated pace. So it's just not dumped in, but it's regulated and goes through the Artist Gasifier where it is heated, not burned, as we tell you. The same technology we're using at Red Hills that I think you may recall. This is the same technology, the same equipment. The wood material that is in the gasifier is heated to about 600 degrees Celsius. It breaks down to the syn gas. The syn gas goes over to the compressor. Where that green arrow is, is about where the biochar at that point comes out and drops into a bucket or into a container. This is a test model, so it's not a huge bin. It is a 55-gallon drum that we're dropping it into. It's not there at the moment. The syn gas goes to the compressor. The why I showed you page three is here we're using a microturban, and at the time when we developed this, microturbines were on them, were available on a used basis, and we wanted to buy a used one, and so that is a micro compressor. What we're using at Upper Lake is the one change from that micro compressor is that page three is a linear generator made by mainspring. You can see the size of that. Those posts are about four feet high, and I just received this information yesterday in terms of what I asked for in terms of compression. They showed me that picture as well. So that is about the artist, the linear generator is probably the largest of the size of the equipment we're using. But if you go back to page one of that document, you can see that we are talking about question, talking about air quality and noise that is produced by the linear generator. I'm not sure where to go from. I can sit and answer questions that you may have.
I think at this time, we will, we thank you for you answering our question. I'll have you sit down. I will officially open public comment and give the public a chance to speak, and then I'll give you another opportunity for a conclusion.
Fine.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. While we have the applicant up here, would you like to ask him any other questions before we open up public comment, or did you want to wait?
I can wait or ask a couple now. I think the two I might ask now might involve staff input as well.
Okay, yeah, then let's address those.
You know, we're passionate about Dark Skies Initiative and maintaining that, you know, as a steady standard. And I didn't see anywhere in the staff report Dark Skies mentioned. I saw a reference to downcast lighting, but I would like to ensure that the Dark Sky Initiative parameters are what we refer to in the staff report rather than just downcast lighting, because Dark Skies consists of more than just the downcast. And then there was a reference in the staff report to this non-permanent structure and other equipment being taken down when the lease expires. Why would the lease expire? I mean, why would this go away after a certain amount of time?
This is a lease...
Is your mic on?
The parcel was purchased by the county as part of the flood control, and they give out up to 15-year leases. So this one was going to be in between 10 and 15. They didn't know exactly, but it would be, everything would be removed after, at the, you know, 10 to 15-year end of the lease.
I guess what I don't understand about that is why, why once this project over a period of 10 or 15 years is well-established and underway, would it just come to a halt? Or would this, all of this activity be moved to another part of the county?
No, I think it would all be taken down and everything would be returned to its natural state because that would be the end of the lease. I have not heard that they would do anything beyond that.
But it wouldn't be the end of available Woody biomass?
No, the Woody biomass projects are intended to go on as long as we have Woody biomass.
So we could do a renewal at that time?
Yeah.
Or like an extension at the end of the 10 to 15 years?
My understanding, well, the lease agreement is with the Department of Water Resources. This project is within the Middle Creek Restoration Project, so it could be that a, and I'm just hypothesizing or guessing, it could be that the lease period is to reevaluate priorities at that time, but it does not signify a lack of interest in ongoing mitigation for wildfire hazards. Additionally, if I could add, Commissioner Hess, the condition number two in aesthetics in the draft conditions of approval does include AES-2. Outdoor lighting shall be restricted to the processing facility and shall be downward, directed downward so as not to illuminate adjacent areas. All lighting being proposed shall conform with the IDA Dark Sky Approved Fixtures.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner. Absolutely. Commissioner Chavez, anything before we give the public an opportunity?
I'll wait for, to ask questions.
Okay. Thank you. That being said, this is the opportunity. I will officially open public comment. This is anybody's opportunity to approach the podium, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. So you're welcome to come on up, and then there will be the sheet there where you will fill out your first and last name. And I do appreciate everyone taking time out of their Thursday to come here and share your concerns or questions.
Are we ready?
I'm ready if you are, and just be sure, don't be afraid of the mic, and just be sure to state your first and last name for me, please.
My name is Tim Chiara. I am the chairman of the Western Region Town Hall, which has jurisdiction over this area. So, and I'm going to read this. The Western Region Town Hall is a California Municipal Advisory Council established under California Government Code Section 31010, which states in part, "The Board of Supervisors of any county made by resolution establish and provide funds for the operation of a municipal advisory council for any unincorporated area in the county to advise the Board on such matters which relate to that area as may be designated by the Board concerning services which are or may be provided to the area by the county or other local governmental agencies, including but not limited to advice on matters of public health, safety, welfare, public works, and planning. Unless the Board of Supervisors specifically provides to the contrary, a municipal advisory council may represent the community to any state, county, city, special district, or school district, agency, or commission, or any other organization on any matter concerning the community." Western Region Town Hall has been in operation since 2017. We have endeavored to engage the local population in their community affairs as they relate to our county and its operation. In order to consider proposed projects within our jurisdiction, we require access to Planning Commission items. We believe we all would like to see more citizen participation in the decision-making process as witnessed by such... as witnessed by such projects as the Local Area Plan Advisory Committee. Neither the Planning Commission or Board of Supervisors can have that participation if the municipal advisory councils are uninformed. We understand that local government methods are constrained by many factors and we appreciate the efforts of our many dedicated public servants. We believe that any project that affects any county locality should begin and end with the participation of the local population. Local expertise and experience can be an unmatched resource that is far superior to any non-local experts. This is why MACs are formed. Involving our lifelong residents and generational families represents an unparalleled opportunity to foster confidence in our governmental institutions and their operation. We urge the county departments to take advantage of those opportunities. Specifically concerning the proposal that is before the Planning Commission today, the council must express its disappointment at the way that it has been presented to the Upper Lake community. This project has been in consideration since at least 2021. At no time in that period, to our knowledge, has the project been presented as anything other than a completed proposal without any input from the local community. There are many concerns that others today will address. We urge the Planning Commission to consider those concerns before approving the project as it stands. We further urge the Board of Supervisors to require proposed projects within the municipal advisory council's boundaries be introduced to the local population for vetting at our regular meetings. Thank you."
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Yeah, sure. Feel free. Good morning. Judy, let's wait till we get to the MAC. Here we go. And if you'd like to pull it down, you can.
And I'm short. I'm a member of the work thing. I attended three meetings that have been talking about this project and I know.
I hate to cut you off, but can you just state your first and last name?
Oh, Judy Cox, COX. I live in Witter Springs.
Thank you.
And I know we're conservative when we approached some new idea and we listened to the pros and the cons. And I feel that these pros and cons really haven't been addressed in any kind of objective way about this project. And biochar to me is a big deal in terms of a soil amendment and what it means and what it can actually do. So I kind of focus on that. And so from the three meetings about this project that I've heard, I feel as if I don't know anything. And one of the things that Tom might do to improve its presentation is to have some kind of a visual representation of this, of, you know, a drawing or rendering of what the actual project is, about what these boxes are going to look like and where they're going to be on the land and what they're going to look like from the highway and what they're like from the creek. In other words, we don't have any kind of dimension in our understanding of what this project is. So I can stumble through this letter I wrote you. "I have attended three Western Regional Town Hall meetings regarding the biochar plant proposed for Upper Lake. I don't feel worth as a municipal advisory council MAC has been adequately informed about this project from objective sources. I found out on my own that the proposed biochar project is leased for a dollar a year from the county on watershed protection district land. The incursions of diesel big rigs and the five day a week, 11 and a half hour day operation of a pyrolysis plant near a creek that wildlife depends on is not consistent with my image of appropriate land use by a watershed protection district. And then I read a little more that it is flood control, but I don't think putting, yeah, you got the picture. So what is the impact? There has not been a representation from the county to present the project. There has not been discussion of land use in terms of the general plan. We have not been told how the pyrolysis will be monitored to abate toxic contaminants that may be mixed with natural inputs. If the material is coming from the Forest Service, what are the effects of fire retardants and herbicides that may have been sprayed on the wood being processed? If this project is benefiting the Forest Service, why can't the project be cited on Forest Service land? How does the University of California Extension evaluate the use of biochar as an agricultural soil additive? The June Edible Mendocino magazine mentions three examples of ag use of biochar. It would be helpful to hear about them from those people. Because this is a, this is a serious matter, I think, which has long-term manifestations. I would feel a lot better if there were a discussion by scientists of the pros and cons of biochar as a soil additive. If it is a good thing, it would be significant breakthrough. While when I see piles of vineyard prunings and falling trees, I see the need for a portable, portable, non-polluting technology that could move from project to project to integrate debris on site. Generating energy at the same time would be a double benefit. Also, I feel we are obligated to support the tribal enterprise and to promote climate-wise innovation. The need is here. The issue is trust."
Your three minutes has, is up, so if we can just wrap it up.
I haven't attended every meeting and my information may be inaccurate. I can see today there's more information than I was, but we would like at Worth to please have more input from the county. And I only made two copies because I didn't realize.
That's completely fine. Thank you so much for coming up and sharing your comment with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And as soon as she makes her way, we can have somebody else come up. Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name and write it down on that piece of paper. And the floor is yours.
Good morning. My name's Barbara Morris. And I live directly across the street, across Highway 20 from this property. My husband and I have lived there since 1976. And historically, my grandfather used to own 755 East Highway 20 and Zeno Jones, and he grew hay on that property. Is it possible to bring up the site map?
I'm sure we could. Is it on the slide possibly or on the PowerPoint?
And the reason is because in the SEQA report, I see only one mention of a very important waterway on that property. It runs north to south through our property under the, okay, here we go. And so from Highway 20, I'm just north of the property and all along the western border of the property is, they call it, it's only listed on the drainage map of the property, but it's a intermittent stream on the county records. It's a broken blue line. But for some reason, it's not mentioned in this report and it's an important waterway that comes all the way down the western border of the property. And there is a dirt road right next to it. And they're proposing to pave the dirt road, which I don't know if you can pave next to an intermittent stream or not. But I was told by Todd Elliott, the the grading inspector here in the county that it had to be 30 feet away, the road. But it doesn't talk about the stream or moving the road in the SEQA report at all. Also, just to point out, in the bottom right-hand corner where it says southeast corner of property in yellow, it's the southwest corner of the property. This is labeled drawn, this map. So that should be changed. If you can see what I'm talking about. This creek, which attaches to our property, it flows north to south from our property through the Hope Jones Cattle Pass underneath the highway. And this is a wildlife corridor. We've been there 50 years and we've seen, you know, foxes, opossums, skunks, turtles, raccoons. They're coming down under that cattle pass. The only other place to cross the road is Middle Creek, which is a half mile away. So this is a pretty important corridor right here for wildlife. I feel like we were told at the last Worth meeting that there'd be 10 trucks going in and out a day. Though it says two to five trucks in the report we were just told. 10 trucks, or two to five diesel trucks would be completely disruptive and intrusive to this wildlife corridor, I feel. And it's going to have, they're going to have to come in and turn around. They're in the SEQA plan. It says that they're going to store diesel at the site, right by the waterway. And they're going to be gassing up the trucks there. I don't, I don't see that, you know, this is, this is going to protect this waterway. This waterway does run to Rodman Slough. Anyway, I know I'm going to run out of time here, so I want to keep going.
It's okay. It already expired. You just can kind of get to your conclusion and you can let somebody else speak.
The SEQA report, I have a problem with that because the biological survey was filled out by a former employee of the tribe. Lawrence Ray worked for the Scotts Valley Tribe for two years, 2011, 2013. And I feel like that report is very important. It should be objective and unbiased. And I don't know if you have a relationship with the people doing the development, how unbiased and objective that report could be, but that SEQA report was filled out by him.
Okay.
And, okay. And he says that the, there'll be no visual impact, very little impact to wildlife. I don't think that's true. And also I just want to say that there's no operating facilities that we can go look at. There are none. There's just a demonstration facility. But where is there one facility like this in operation that we can go look at? There's no historical data to tell us how safe this is. If there's particulates that are in the air, there's no way to know if it's safe. So let's not wait till it's too late to find out.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you for letting me go over.
Sure. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Larry Khan. I own the property on the eastern border of this project. And I've seen the, ever since the county took over this property, it's been mismanaged so many different ways. And I think this is just another mismanagement. First of all, their their idea of having a plant right there is within of the thousand foot mark to my house. And that's, I think against the rules from what I understand. So that's why I'm against, one of the reasons why I'm against it. Another reason is the prevailing winds come from that direction. Any kind of pollutants, noise is going to come right into my house. Not happy about that. This last year, my property taxes were raised like $6,000 a year without any warning. And I think it should go down the other way because they're destroying my property values. When I moved there, it was a beautiful vineyard. And when the county took over that property, the first thing they did was allow the grapes that were on the property to just die on the vine. By my calculations, they wasted about a quarter million dollar opportunity to have someone come in and process those grapes, but they didn't. And it was further mismanaged. When I had asked them a few years ago if I could lease the property and expand my hay business. I grow hay on my property and I wanted to expand it with more acreage. Never got an answer back. I probably called E.J. Crandall 20 times. And every time I got put off or deflected and nothing ever happened. And so all of a sudden, this project comes up and they get preferential treatment. And I just feel that, you know, now they're getting preferential treatment, but what is the county getting? You know, a dollar a year? It just seems like it's not very good, good management. I would have paid a fair market value for the property to grow hay on, but they didn't seem to want that. They want to give this thing away. And who's going to monitor it after it starts going, you know? Maybe initially, it's like a car, it runs really good, but then as things break down and more pollutants start coming out, who's going to, who's going to watch this thing? It's going to be an eyesore for me. It's going to be an eyesore for the community. There's no value to the county as far as I can see, a dollar a year. What good is that? Right now, it's just a giant weed patch. You know, they came in with prison labor. They cut all the vines at the ground level and just did a horrible job. There's still piles of PVC and piles of steel, steel wire out there that they didn't clean up properly. If they had allowed me to come in there, I would have cleaned up that whole property and grown my hay on it. But I never got the opportunity. And now they're going to bring this other project in there that's somewhat untested, you know? They're creating charcoal, biochar charcoal, but, you know, humans have been doing that for thousands of years, doing a burning process. They have a new process now, but they can't, they can't contain every bit of pollutants that's going to come out of this thing.
I hate to cut you off, but your three minutes did expire. So if you could just, my mic is off. Your three minutes has expired, but if you could just kind of get to your conclusive, your conclusion and we will have someone else speak.
Well, in conclusion, I just feel that this is going to affect my property and my ability to enjoy the property in a negative way. I don't see any positives whatsoever. That's about it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm John LaBoito. I've been farming in Upper Lake for about 12 years. I'm one of several people, previous gentleman, who approached the county asking if we could lease this property. I got permission from Mr. De León to go out there and explore it. There are, I can't describe how terribly the county approached this vineyard removal when they could have leased the vineyard for production. The, there are piles and piles of trash. There, the vineyard removal is incomplete. The vines are still growing under the blackberries. I could not afford to remove the trash and complete the vineyard removal. So I didn't pursue it. However, I agree that the county could get a lot more, could have gotten a lot more out of this property and maybe still could. And I think it would be a very reasonable condition to place on this project to make the applicant remove the trash from the entire property. Why? I mean, this project takes five acres or maybe it needs 10. But there's still 30 or 40 acres that could be farmed out there. So why not ask the applicant, he's got the equipment on site, to remove the trash piles at a reasonable pace, complete the removal of the vineyard and in some way get the rest of the property back in ag production? This is prime farm, prime Williamson Act farmland. What are we talking about here? The, ideally, this project would be located on an abandoned mill site in or near the national forest. It's really an industrial project grinding big ones into little ones. The second thing that I'll, that I'll add here is, I don't know why they leased the whole property. I mean, they only need five or 10 acres. Why lease the whole property? And I guess the last thing I'll say is gravel roads and gravel paths are really bad for farmland. I know theoretically we can scrape them off again and haul them away. But as the project winds down and the, and the cash resources wind down at the end, they hardly ever get removed. The gravel migrates downward in the soil and you can't use it for agriculture ever again. However, wood chips make a pretty good road, about the same size. And if they get abandoned in place, they eventually rot away and that ground can go back to farming. back to, to farming. So I, I really think you oughta, I don't know why they leased the whole property for such a cheap price, but you certainly could, I think, put some additional conditions on this, get the whole property cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comment. I still have public comment open if anyone wishes to speak.
I'd like to submit a presentation by a missing member of the WORTH Board.
Okay. Did you wanna read that into the record?
I can if that works.
Yeah, absolutely. Just get closer to the mic and if you could please just state your first and last name for me, please, one more time.
My name is Kate Parankema. That's P-A-R-A-N-K-E-M-A. I'm a present member of the WORTH Board. And I'm reading a presentation or a memorandum from Claudine Petroncelli, who is also a WORTH Board member. But in addition, she's on the, the Upper Lake United School District Board of Trustees. And she also runs the Upper Lake Senior Center. So she was not available based on her schedule to join us today. So I'm gonna read her presentation, if I may.
Please do.
She said, "I have been a member of the WORTH at Upper Lake since 2017. We urged community members to share their concerns and opinions regarding biochar project. I will share my concerns. One, there has been no data regarding emissions and air quality damage. There are three schools as well as several daycares in the immediate area. There is a disruption to wildlife who have created a natural habitat in what has been a pristine agricultural acreage. There is extreme traffic hazard on Highway 20 as big rigs pull in and out of the site. Destruction to Elk Mountain Road as big rigs rumble up and down the road. What will happen to the water quality as the property has a water source? The biochar project has been basically kept quiet and hidden from Upper Lake citizens. What about noise pollution? It is interesting that if the tribe has leased this five acre area for two years, why haven't they cleared and cleaned up the property? What about emissions seeping into the ground from diesel vehicles and other vehicles?" She closes by saying, "My hope is that this project will be studied with additional time for you on the Lake County Planning Commission to explore before granting the biochar permit from the go-ahead. With regards, Claudine Petroncelli, Upper Lake." For my own part, I believe that we're aware that Lake County seems to function in a group of silos. And I think that this is a remarkable opportunity with the Planning Commission perhaps leading the charge, to break down some of the silos that seem to come about in terms of keeping information from organizations like the MAC and from some of the other citizens who don't participate through the MAC. And so I would offer that reconsideration or further hearings on this matter would be prudent. Thank you. And can I offer this?
Absolutely. Yes, you can leave that with us. We will stamp it and keep it for our records.
One other thought, I'm sorry. Back in, I understand it was 2017, and I haven't been able to like verify this. Caltrans did a major resurfacing of the Highway 20 up in the Upper Lake area and adjacent north shore. At that time, they were doing something experimental. They were grinding up old tire carcasses and introducing that into the mix that went into the roadways. And I understand the consequence of that was basically introducing as a steady state PFAs. And I, I can't even begin to pronounce what they constitute because it's like five syllables. But PFAs are presently draining into what are the headwaters that are introduced into Clear Lake. So it was a grand idea at the time, but perhaps additional resource or research and foresight could have foreseen that. But this is presently going on. And we don't need to continue that kind of trend.
Thank you for sharing your comment. Just so we are, just so the Zoom room knows that I have not forgot about you out there, Zoom room. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to raise your hand and we will unmute you. Let's go with the first hand we have raised. What's the name?
Frank.
Frank, we're going to unmute you. And if you could please state your first and last name, we'll give you three minutes.
Good morning. Thank you. Frank Abley. I'm with the Mendocino National Forest, Upper Lake Ranger District.
Thank you, Frank. We can hear you.
Great. Thank you. And first, before I make a comment, I did wanna address a question that came up earlier, and that is that the Forest Service does not really have a flat level piece of ground of the size and location appropriate. Scotts Valley did actually approach us to see if they could locate it on Forest Service lands and, and we just do not have a suitable site. Again, as, as a Forest Service employee, I cannot advocate for any individual, advocate or oppose any individual project, but I wanted to make some comments about what we're facing on the National Forest System lands. And that is, and I think we're all aware that the Lake County has a fuels issue. During the Mendocino complex and particularly the ranch fire up on the National Forest, what we saw over and over again is where we treated timber stands and forest stands and were able to remove the biomass from the forest, those trees and upper canopies did fairly well in the ranch fire. Where we treated and we were not able to remove the biomass, those trees did not do very well. We lost a lot of habitat. And right now, the only way we have of removing biomass from the National Forest System lands in Upper Lake is by burning it. We have been approached by places like Wheelaberter and Anderson for biomass removal, but the hall costs are just too, too much to make it even economically feasible for them to do so. So any tool in the toolbox that I can use and the Forest Service can use to remove biomass from the forest floor so that we can improve the habitat and maintain a fire resilient forest would certainly be appreciated and useful to us. Removing biomass by just burning alone is a very slow and extremely expensive process, not to mention, you know, the impacts to air quality during prescribed fire or burning piles. And so, any other method that we can use is gonna be helpful.
All right. Does that conclude your comment, Frank?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for sharing your comment with us. Is there any other hands? Donna, we're gonna unmute you and if you could please state your first and last name, we-
Donna Metz, I'm, would like to offer some comments as G-PAC and LEPAC shoreline plan. I just had a couple of comments. I didn't know if an archaeological study was performed. And is this in line with the Middle Creek Restoration Project? And does it have support of water resources? And with the road going in, we learned at the science symposium about the major runoff issues comes from road runoff. Has this been adequately looked at because it runs directly into Rodman Slough? And on page 30 of 46, we see 42 native plant species, sensitive plant species were identified, and 15 sensitive wildlife species. Just wondering if that was properly addressed? And let's see. Lastly, the site soils consist of lupayoma, silt loam, which is the protected soil. And I had concerns on flooding and I was wondering if that had properly been addressed? And thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you for your comment, Donna. Is there any other hands in the Zoom room?
No.
Okay. I still have public comment open in chambers if you're wanting to speak.
Real quick.
Absolutely. Just make sure you state your first and last name for me.
Jerry Morris, Barbara Morris, husband.
Sure. Just speak a little closer to the mic so everybody out there on internet can hear you.
It's just the community development. This is community undevelopment that it's gonna have. The aesthetics of the whole community is gonna downgrade from the, the good vibe in Upper Lake. It's gonna diminish the whole point of the, the friendliness of Upper Lake. It's gonna have a negative impact on the kids, the families. And you're gonna be looking over your shoulder, who's gonna be liable for any caustic liability from whatever could happen? Traffic, air, water? Who's liable? Is there gonna be immunity for the tribal community that nobody's gonna be able to get sued? Or who's gonna be liable? The county? Are they gonna be susceptible to being sued too if anything goes wrong? There's, you know, who's gonna take responsibility for any liabilities and the negativity that could occur? And just wanna have that in the frame of mind of the people that are all involved with this here. It's just a negative impact for the community development of Upper Lake. There's no positivity to it whatsoever. There's no beneficial fisher for a few jobs. It's all negative for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comment. Feel free to come on up. Don't forget to state your first and last name, please.
My name, first name is Robert, last name is Thomas, and I'm a local community member and love for the forest. Thank you for the, the space, the time, the chair, planning. I just wanna say thank you for being open and considering new technology and ways, ways to improve our practices. I think I can speak on, for most of the people in the world, that it's okay to say while change can be unsettling, the past environmental effects is the very passion that drives this intention and why we're here today to try and make a change. And I also would like to say thank you for aligning focus on the positive effects in hopes of seeing a healthier community and a healthier planet that hopefully reduces the cost, not only in monetarily, but for the young people, the generations that are coming in. Because I'd like to help restore that hope for what they're about to sit up on and what we're about to hand to them. I'm also proud of this county. While maybe small in size, taking steps to grow, it takes courage and it shows large innovation. So thank you again for the time.
Thank you for your comment. Take one last look around. Maybe not my last look. Good morning.
Good morning, Planning Commission and staff. Julia Carrera, Upper Lake resident, representing Upper Lake residency today. The first thing I wanna do is make you aware of, and formally make you aware of, a designated dangerous public facility, which is the Upper Lake Levy System. It has been designated as unsafe and unfit and unable to carry the water it was designed This Planning Commission now holds on its shoulders a liability if you move this forward, and let me tell you why. Biochar and wood chips in a flood situation absorb water and will clog the intermittent creek as referred to, but it's really a storm drain system, for the floodwaters when we flood. It's not if, it's when. It will happen. This project, I am 100% supportive of. It's, I believe, wholeheartedly in positive economic and community growth, which this project definitely represents. The location of this project will add to the catastrophe that the Upper Lake residents sit daily waiting to happen. The floodwaters will take those wood chips and biochar and clog up that whole drainage system into Rodman Slough, which Upper Lake depends, depends on, so we don't sit under the 10 feet of water as designated by the feasibility study done by the Sacramento Valley Flood Commission and Water Resources. You can find it on the Water Resources website YouTube channel. It was done in December of 2021. The other issue that hasn't been discussed at all is the scenic highway debacle here in Lake County. Originally, Highway 20 was designated as a scenic highway. And there was a time when DCC did review that for scenic highway requirements. Unfortunately, due to changes of department heads over the years, that seems to have fallen through the cracks. And if you look at the state guidelines, this type of project are not allowed on scenic highways. And personally, from my perspective, if this project goes through when we flood, we will be under 10 feet of water much longer than we need to be because one very major drainage system will be clogged. I support all of my resident neighbors that have spoken this evening and what they've said. Their very good comments. And being prime ag lands, we should be looking at agriculture. Being in a flood zone where the county purchased this for the Rodman Slough Restoration Project, which is why probably it's only a 10 to 15-year lease. We're gonna flood no matter what in Upper Lake, so I would like to see this moved to half mile down the road to an industrial site there by, by the market, Mount Save More. That whole area is industrial and we wouldn't have, it won't be next to a creek that's drainage for Upper Lake that's gonna flood. I mean, it just doesn't make sense, the location. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing your comment with us. Does anybody else wish to speak before I close public comment? I do appreciate everyone taking the time to, to share your thoughts and concerns. I will check back with the Zoom room and everyone's okay there. All right, everybody. I'm gonna officially close public comment and I will bring it back to the commission for, for some discussion. And if there's any questions for the applicant.
I do have some questions for the applicant. Good morning. Few questions regarding air quality. The, could you describe the air quality concerns from the processing of biomass? You know, what, what are, what's coming out of the plant?
I will attempt to, is this on?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. Tom Jordan, staff, Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. The slide we showed you, the process of creating the biochar is in the gasifier. The gasifier is a sealed chamber. There is no release of GHGs or any other kind of pollutant in this process. It is clean, neat, and, and as a result, there is no impact on the air quality as a result of processing biochar. Where there is the most modest of impact is in the burning of the syn gas in the linear generator. If you looked at page one of the document that I gave you today, at the bottom of that page, you will see the kinds of emissions that are coming out. For example, nitrous, nitrous oxide, 1.5 parts per million. That's less than any car. To give you an example, a diesel truck running down Main Street on Upper Lake will produce in that one short journey more pollutants, more detriments, more GHGs to the atmosphere than our system would produce in a year. As it is said in that same article, the pair, two paragraphs above, "Main Street's linear generators create virtually zero criteria emissions regardless of the fuel composition. This system will be cleaner than any gas or diesel engine in Lake County." So we are trying to introduce a clean energy system process and technology that has not been used in this county in any place that we know of. So I hope I've answered your question there. In terms of the air quality, there is no impact. The, this, this system does not produce anything that will be detrimental to the, to the surrounding neighbors, to the surrounding residents, to the community- to the surrounding residents, to the community. A diesel truck running past the schools, in the elementary school or the high school or the middle school is going to create more pollutants, more cancerous activity to those students than this project would ever create in its lifetime.
Thank you. I did understand that. I just wanted to have it out there for the public so that they could hear it.
Okay.
But that is a very good explanation, so thank you for that. Another question that I had was regarding the, let me show you right here. What type of pad is proposed for the equipment and for staging of vehicles?
So there is no pad. The process that we're using, because of the sensitivity of the site and our discussions with the Habemotol Nation that is in this jurisdiction, and the potential that there are two or three ancient villages in the area, we are doing a surface mounting process for all of our equipment. That means it will be just set on the surface. It'll be secured to the soil through anchor bolts, which are two, about two feet in length, and they screw down into the soil to hold the equipment in place. So it's a surface modification. The canopy will be set on C containers, two C containers on each side of the canopy, with them holding, tied down and held in place so that they sit on the surface as well. The only degradation we're doing or soil disturbance that will occur will be for a foundation to pit in the 27,000 gallon water tank that the North Shore Fire Protection District seems to think we need because he doesn't totally understand the difference between spontaneous combustion and in wood chips as opposed to spontaneous combustion that happens in more organic material. So as a result of that, we have to put on this 27,000 gallon tank. And that will require digging down a foot to put in a foundation of concrete. So that will be about 20 by 20 feet, as I understand. So that's the only degradation. With respect to the paving, the only paving that's going to occur is in a 60-foot apron adjacent to Highway 20. And that is there so that the trucks have a potential of entering the highway safely. They can sit on that asphalted area until such time as they can make a full right-hand turn, enter safely into Highway 20 and continue down Highway 20. There'll be no left-hand turns. There will be no paved road next to the waterway that was referenced. That will be a gravel road with a new technology using what are called open, the best I can describe them are open square bricks. They're not, they're made out of plastic material, recycled plastic, which are filled in and held, hold the gravel in place. That is required for the, again, for the fire protection district so that they can get a fire truck in there in the event there were a fire in, on the area. So that's all gravel and that's where the gravel will be. It'll come from the apron. It'll move down on the side, the western side of the property. We can keep it away from the drainage area. We were going to use the existing road there because it is existing and we thought that that would be the logical place to put a, to put a lane or a path for the fire trucks and for the trucks entering the promises. There was a comment that there would be 10 trucks a day. There is not going to be 10 trucks a day. The average will be two to three trucks a day bringing in material and at most, one truck leaving the site a day with the biochar. The biochar will be contained as it wasn't shown up on that demonstration model, but it will be trapped or dropped into a container that is then hauled away. It will not lie on the ground. It'll be always above ground, as will the chips that'll go into the trailers that'll be moved off-site to go to another area. One-third or about 30% of the chips are used to power the system. We're using a clean alternative generating system to make the plant self-generating as opposed to using a dirty fuel process such as, we could have used diesel generators and run diesel generators. That's totally allowed under the zoning code, as I understand from the planning director. We're not using that. We're using this clean energy process so that we do not impact the area. I think you have to understand that the Pomo tradition here is 12,000 years old. It is very well tied to the land, that has husband this land for those years. It is very sensitive to the land. It is connected to the land in a way that the established culture is not as connected. And in that process, we would never want to do anything that would be injurious or detrimental to the environment. And so the way that we pursue this operation, as we will with all our operations, are as that cultural value held in mind and always tested against.
Thank you very much.
And also, I can answer some of the other questions that were made.
That's okay.
The wildlife corridor, again, we, the biological study is surveyed. There is mitigations that are put into the plan relative to making sure that the wildlife is not injured or prevented from moving through the site. We are only fencing one acre of the five-acre area. The rest of our five acres would be unfenced, as well as the rest of the property. So we believe that there will be plenty of room and opportunity for the wildlife to continue their patterns, to migrate from the north side of Highway 20 all the way down through that waterway channel and into Rodham and Slough, if that's where they are going. Where they were going, we would want to make sure we protect and make sure that they have that opportunity to do so. I spoke to you about the traffic. I didn't mention that there are 22,000 passenger cars a day traveling that highway and 1,900 trucks. Our impact on that is de minimis. We're looking at five employees at the peak period operation. That's five cars coming to the site on a daily basis compared to 22,000 that run that freeway. It is a small portion. Our trucks, one to two to three trucks a day maximum versus 1,900 a day. Again, it's a small impact upon what is, what is in that particular area. The lease costs, I do not know where they got this idea that it's a dollar a day. It is not much. I agree and acknowledge it is, it is a hunt, but it is $100 to lay by the signed lease that we have with the Watershed Protection District. We have no problem if the watershed protection, the fact we would enjoy to have neighbors working that site and if they would want to lease all of the land around us to farming or any other activity, we'd be totally open to that. We would support that. We would think that would be a marvelous use of that land as well. That is not in our purview. It's not our position to do so. But we would certainly support anybody who the Watershed Protection District wanted to engage and to use that land in a more productive way than where it is right now. In terms of the biochar, it is pure carbon. Our independent laboratory tests show that our value is 92 to 95, which is incredibly high. I did present samples, and I apologize for not bringing it today, of our biochar. It is a very small, smaller than rabbit detritus size pellets. It is ready to be used as a soil amendment using a, if a farmer were to use a manure spreader unit, he could use that easily to spread the material into the soil and then till it in when they did their, the tilling of the soil. It is ready to go. And as I say, it's a pure carbon. It has nothing, no negative qualities to it, no chemical properties that would be injurious to the community or to anyone else. It does not produce dust of a significant order because, again, it is contained and moved off the site. There's this idea that we're using Elk Mountain Road. We are not using Elk Mountain Road. If you ask Frank Rabeli, he's, hopefully he's still on, in the chat room. The area that he is using right now to remove understory, which is the kind of a material that we're using, we're using the non-commercial understory as a fuel for our systems. That material is going to come from the area that I referenced in my mind as east of Nice to Clear Lake Oaks. That is the area that Frank and his crews and contractors are using right now to remove that material along with the wildlife and urban interface. I think if you just saw some of the messages that came out of the Glenn Fire, those families in those areas that did that wild risk reduction area around their homes and up into that, close to the forest, were easily able to be saved and that fire controlled. Frank wants to make sure that that fire doesn't come back the other way in that forest area. And that's the area that we're looking to be receiving our material in a ship form from contractors. Again, I think if you look at noise, which was a concern of Mr. Khan and the neighbor, on page three of the document I gave you today, I think you'll see down there that the linear generator operates at 70 dB A at six feet. I believe 60 dB A is the normal conversation level of two people talking with each other. So 70 is not significantly higher. At 1,000 feet, it won't be heard. The linear gen, or the gasifiers run about 99 dB A. Right next to them, 25 feet away, they drop down to 40 dB A. The zoning code, I think, allows or requires us to keep the noise down to 56 dB A at the property lines. We certainly are intending to meet that requirement and we will take every precaution to do so. So we do not see this as a system that creates a tremendous amount of noise. I think I've answered most of the questions. Oh, hazardous material. We do not store huge amounts of hazardous materials on the property. The largest container we would have would be diesel field, which would be probably in the standard 50 to 55 gallon container. It itself will be held and housed in a containment unit so that if there is any leakage or breakage, it will stay within the containment unit. It will not penetrate the ground or will not surface around the ground. With respect to the flooding, again, the biochar is, would never be in a situation where it would be lost or able to be released in a flood. And we will take similar precautions with respect to wood chips to ensure that they do not move in a time of a flooded area, which last year I thought was a tremendously high, fast level of rainfall. And we noticed that there wasn't any serious impact on that site at that point. So while we are sensitive and acknowledge that flooding can occur, we certainly are aware that we have placed the plant in a position based upon the information that the county has given us so that we are not in the floodplain area. If that position is wrong and that needs to be recalculated, that five-acre area can be moved again to the west or to the north. But we have made it as far to the south as we can without getting to the floodplain. So we're outside the scenic corridor. We're outside the negative impact that you see in that area. There is one condition of the application that did concern me, and that was the landscape plan requirement. I'm not quite sure why that was in there. It makes no sense that we'd have to do a landscaping of the area. We'd think that your commission would want us to keep it in that standard form and natural looking as it is now. A landscape tends to be something that's more formal. It would require removing and changing the look of that area. And we don't see why we would want to do that. It would make no sense on a site that is used on a daily basis to process wood. So we would request that that particular condition be removed. I'm happy to answer any other questions I may have created in my presentation.
Well, just in terms of visual impacts, what about the complaints about PVC pipe and steel on the property and not properly removed vineyards, that kind of thing?
That's all been done by the county and the Watershed Protection District. And I don't think it's within our required lease that we remove that area. We certainly like to look at it. I know some of that, if you walk down the existing path, you'll see it on both sides of the path. It is the same that I see as I drive by Kelseyville Lumber every day. It's strewn up into a vineyard. It is something that should be looked at. We can consider looking at that, but it wasn't in our original idea.
I would strongly urge you to consider that kind of cleanup.
Okay.
As an, if nothing else, as an act of good faith.
Good faith and neighborly. Absolutely. Understood.
I'm sorry, public comment's closed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There are just a couple other details. I checked with the Caltrans website on scenic highways. It has an Excel spreadsheet of eligible as well as designated state highways for scenic highways. Currently, there are no designated highways in Lake County. It does list, though, Highway 53 from Lower Lake to Clear Lake Oaks as an eligible state scenic highway, though there has been no designation signified on their website. It also lists county designated scenic highways, and there are no Lake County designated scenic highways on the Caltrans website. And then secondly, I do appreciate the input from the Western Region Tower Hall. The department highly values the input and regularly relies on our municipal advisory councils to spread the word and create awareness amongst the public, as well as serving as an advisory body. That is why commonly we send out, including with this project, we do send out our requests for review, including project descriptions, so they have early identification knowledge of the projects. We did not receive an invitation to speak on this project, but I do regularly either attend myself to any municipal advisory council where a supervisor asks for me to attend, or we send staff to speak to it. So we stand ready and available to support our municipal advisory councils because we do value their input. There were, I think, at least one of their meetings where Tom spoke about the project too. Thank you. And just so the commission is aware. But we do regularly rely on our municipal advisory councils, especially right now with the Lake County 2050, and their input is valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Turner. Commissioner Chavez, do you have any other questions?
No further questions.
Okay. Commissioner Hess? Were your questions answered sufficiently? Okay.
Actually, one thing about that condition of approval regarding landscaping, that the part of construction activities, a landscaping plan shall be submitted to the Community Development Department that, I think there's a typo in there, that includes the appropriate visual screening using drought-resistant or indigenous vegetation. Water conservation shall be applied with the use of drip irrigation. I mean, that could just be as simple as just doing some kind of screening along the, what's that road there? Screen vegetation between the facility and the road or?
I would actually recommend a conversation with the Water Resources Department since the, this project does not have control over the entire parcel. They are limited to the guidelines or to the lease that was signed with the Watershed Protection District.
Within those five acres?
Our department would be happy to work with the applicant and the department to see what their department thinks would be appropriate.
And while we're kind of on that topic, if a member of the public wanted to look into leasing the other acreage that's not being used, is that still a possibility?
As has been historically, they're always welcome to consult with the Water Resources Department. This department has zero jurisdiction over land lease.
Okay. Thank you, Director Turner. And just so you guys know, since there are only three of us, we are in a position where it has to be unanimous. So that's where we are at.
So the lack of a unanimous vote would effectively deny the application without prejudice?
It's my understanding.
And I'm the longest-serving commissioner sitting here. And I'm always uneasy when we don't have a full house.
Yep.
And we don't have the input of all of the commissioners. And I feel that particularly strongly in this case. I would, I would love to have Commissioner Brown here today to talk about cultural and tribal resources and the value contained therein. I take Mr. Jordan at his word that the Scots Valley Band of Pomo Indians is equally concerned and careful about those resources. And I feel like I have enough information to make a decision, go forward here today. But I do respect the community's comments about feeling inadequately informed. And if by continuing this measure today, we would be able to take it back up when all five commissioners were here, and that would create more time for more information gathering and sharing with the community that might be productive.
I am in agreement with a continuation. I feel that the information, or some information that has been brought forward today could be very useful and informative to the public and to their municipality. today could be very useful and informative to the public and to their municipality, their committees. I too agree that it's, you know, we have a, a commission for a reason with, with five of us and this being in Commissioner Brown's district, I, I would like to have his, I, I feel like a continuance would be the best way to go about this without prejudice so that they could come back and have an answer.
I'd also like to say that I strongly believe in this kind of project and this kind of approach to removing witty biomass from our community and generating such energy. I'm in no way opposed to the, the concept at all. And in fact, I think it's some, it's very forward looking, as the gentleman sitting towards the back mentioned earlier.
And, you know, just be neighborly if they're, if going out and having your questions answered, walking out and seeing firsthand what, what the eight-foot tall piece of machinery is going to be, just kind of addressing those concerns with the source might be beneficial if we were to give you guys a little bit more time before we were to make a decision based, or you know, make a decision for the use permit. I think giving the community another opportunity to have that communication with you would be great with the applicant.
Understood.
Okay, Commissioner Chavez?
Yeah, hearing the community and how their organization, how they organize and brought all their questions and concerns to the meeting, all those concerns were heard and addressed by the applicant. So I, I've, at first I was a little more concerned with, you know, all the questions that were coming out from the community there. But I, I feel like the applicant did a really good job at explaining and addressing a lot of those concerns. So if, I don't know how the community feels, if they got a lot of their questions answered or if they feel a little more easier about the process, seeing some, some heads nodding there. But I, I mean, I, I agree with the rest of the commission to have more members here present and kind of take, take another look.
Consensus?
Is there a date certain that the director might recommend or?
The next available meeting date is November 14th.
Okay.
We are also doing, we have a couple other items tentatively scheduled for that date, but that's our next available agenda date.
When would the, the MAC otherwise be meeting between now and that day? The third Wednesday of November.
We could then schedule, the next available agenda meeting would be in December on the 12th. And we have one item already scheduled, so it sounds like 9:15 would be the next, 9:20.
I, does?
Well, I just want to make sure that if we create this window of time, that the time is used well and that there would be a more detailed presentation to the community, perhaps including, Director Turner, perhaps including somebody from the community development department as well as Mr. Jordan, just so that there's a more fulsome conversation with the community.
We'd be happy to attend, certainly.
Yes, or Water Resources or whoever they need to at that time. So what we are working on as of right now, correct me if I'm wrong, is a continuance to a date certain of 12/12, that would be December 12th, 2024, at a time certain of 9:20, giving the public the opportunity to have your, your MAC meeting, open the door, open that communication with community development, water resources, giving, just give the, the public a chance to really get their questions answered and soak it all in, you know, and just it, like the gentleman had said earlier, change is scary and this is something that is very new, very alien or foreign to people. But I feel like once the questions are answered and maybe a visual on how the process is ran, as far as getting the product, running it through all the machinery and then what's left, I feel like that will answer enough questions to make everybody feel comfortable. And I do appreciate everybody coming here today and voicing your concerns as well as Mr. Jordan answering those questions.
I concur and I appreciate your remarks here today, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you very much. December 14th would work. December 7th would be a day of concern for me.
How about 12/12?
12/12 would work. December 7th may not.
Okay. So I, I believe we are, do you, you need anything more formal counsel? As far as a motion, as a consensus of a continuance?
Yeah, you're, you're, there would be a motion to continue the item to 12/12 at 9:20.
Okay.
And I, and I so move that item 6C be continued until December 12th, 2024, at a time of 9:20 a.m.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for a continuance to December 12th at 9:20. Thank you so much. Moving on to our non-timed items, if we have any, or possibly a wonderful department update from Director Turner?
Other than layback meetings are ongoing, it's still layback season. We have two or three of them next, next week. And I wanted to express my appreciation for Ruby. She has been taking a gazillion pieces of data on spreadsheets and cranking them out into finding appropriate meetings where we can maximize public input. So I'm very thankful. That actually concludes my report.
Excellent. And just so everybody knows, I have noticed that all of the layback meetings are available on our Lake County Peg TV. So if you can't make it to a meeting and you need something and you want to fill your head with a bunch of useful information on what's going on, you're welcome to check out their YouTube channel. They have all of the area committees as well as they, the board of supervisors' meetings and our meetings here for city council and city of Lakeport and for city of Lakeport. Other than that, I think that concludes our meeting. We will go ahead and adjourn at 11:09.